The Carson City School District Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. We are going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And we will start off with Agenda Item Number One, Adoption of the Agenda as Submitted, and this is for Possible Action. And I am going to move Agenda Item Number Seven to a later time, as the presenter is not here yet. So I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees Adopt the Agenda as Submitted with the Amendment for Number Seven.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Trustee Peterson, second by Trustee Walker. Any board discussion? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Two, Flag Salute by Trustee Rebecca Roberts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Roberts. Agenda Item Number Three, Superintendent's Report, and this is for information only. Superintendent Feeling.
Yeah, maybe they thought it started at seven. That doesn't mean they read it. Doesn't mean they read it. So, thank you, President Ramirez. We were expecting to have a couple folks here tonight to celebrate some achievements, but they don't appear to be in the audience at the moment. So I would ask if they do end up showing up, maybe we could recognize them, we could fit them in a little bit later. Hopefully, they'll be here.
That works for me.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay, very good.
Just a couple other items. I just wanted to give a really big thank you to the Lions Club. They conducted over 2,000 vision screenings over the past five months for many, many Carson students across all of our schools. And it's just a great partnership that we've had with them over a very long time and very much appreciate their service to our kids in the community. Twelve of our Carson High students made the Nevada American Choral Directors Association High School Honor Choir, which if that was an acronym, it'd be NACDAHIC. It's really long, but the Nevada American, NACA, NACA, NACDAHIC. But the Nevada American Choral Directors Association High School Honor Choir. So congratulations to those students and Mr. Sana Maker. Tomorrow night at the Fandango, we're going to have the First Semester Awards for the Mayor's Attendance Hall of Fame. There's lots of really, really nice mountain bikes that are going to be handed out. I was at the fitting over at 395 Motorsports, and thanks to them for their support, students coming in and a lot of smiles, and now they got fit for the right bikes, and so now they get to pick them up. So 5:30 tomorrow night at the Fandango. And Thursday is an event. It is the 100th day of school. So we are 100, 180th of the way there.
Do you have your beaded necklace ready?
I, I just may. Well, we'll see.
Either there or he's gonna go shopping after the meeting.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Feeling. Okay, Agenda Item Number Four, Board Reports, Board Member Comments, and this is for information only. I was informed that we don't have Carson High School representatives. Do we have Pioneer Academy? Yes, we do. Come on up.
While they're coming up, I'll mention, we don't have the Carson High reps, but they gave me their notes.
Awesome. So you will be reporting on that? Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Caitlin Nguyen, and this is...
Jesse Emilio.
He's kind of new to the whole announcement thing, but he wanted a chance to represent Pioneer, and I think that's really cool for a student who is new here to want to do that. So we'll be presenting Pioneer's announcements tonight. We recognize that our parents and guardians might be overwhelmed with all of the New Year's task, and we wanted to help them apply for FAFSA for their students. So we'll be holding a FAFSA night at 6:00 PM on February 3rd. We want to cultivate an environment where parents feel safe to discuss and work on their students' applications.
The Speech and Debate Tournament at North Valleys on the 17th and 18th was a smashing success. Over a dozen speakers on our team earned places on the scoreboard, and they're projected to enter a national qualifying tournament in March. We are so proud of them and will support them through all of their future endeavors. The, sorry, the ALCO Tournament is slated for next month.
If you would also like to support Pioneer's thinkers, we're excited to tell you all that our next Pioneer Pizza Painting and Punch, it's so hard to say that, night is this week. Our doors will open on Thursday, January 30th at 5:30 PM. We highly recommend that you RSVP because there's a link to it on a Google form on Carson Now's recent article about speech and debate. Finally, we are currently running access tests for our LEP students. We wish them the best of luck, and we are super excited to see how they do. Thank you. This is Caitlin.
And Jesse.
Signing off.
Thank you, Caitlin and Jesse. Good job, both of you. Okay, very good. We will continue with Nevada Association of School Boards' updates.
Yeah, I have just a couple things. As everyone knows, we're having the day with the Legislature on March 5th, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Apparently, on the flyer, and I wasn't aware of this either, but on the flyer that was sent out on the 15th by Renee, there's about halfway down, there's a, it says NASB Day at the Legislature Collection Survey. The Executive Director wants everybody to fill out that survey because that tells them how many people are going to be coming. So I know that Michelle and Molly and myself have signed up now, but he said as of today, no one else had. So I was unaware we were supposed to do that either until today. So you might want to do that as soon as possible. And then on the 6th, everyone knows also that the NSB, NASB Orientation Part Three is going to be held here in Carson City. And right now, the venue has not been announced, but it should be announced shortly. Unless, Mike, do you know the venue yet?
I was going to thank Trustee or President Ramirez for helping us secure WNC for that. So I believe it'll be at WNC, but we'll wait for official word from Rick.
Okay, great. And that's really about all I have for NASB. Thank you.
So one thing, I'm going to be going to Washington DC this week and participating in the National School Board Association Leadership Symposium and Advocacy Conference, and then it'll end with Advocacy on the Hill, so meeting with our legislative leaders and advocating for public education. So hopefully, we'll make some good connections and get some good people behind us.
Thank you for your update. And then we will go on with Board Members. Do you want to start, Trustee Peterson?
All right. So here's the notes from the Carson High Representatives, and pretty much what I would have reported anyways, so it's perfect. It says, hello, School Board reps, or good evening, Board. We had our new Student Body Officers for the 25-26 school year elected. So the Student Body President will be Kyle Allen, Student Body Vice President Leah Vezquez, Student Body Secretary Jaden Joaquin, Student Body Treasurer Saran McGee, Student Body Public Relations Sadie Brown, and School Board Representative Cooper Fueling. Last name we might recognize. We also have Winter Fest coming up, and so there's the week of events leading up to it. So next Monday, starting February 3rd, that evening, they're doing Painting, Pizza, and Punch from 6:00 to 7:00 in Senator Square with a $10 entry, and they're inviting us Board Members to come be a part of as much of this as we'd like. And then Wednesday, the 5th, is the Talent Show. It's at 6:30. The entry fee is $5, and I'll put an extra plug there because my daughter is one of the MCs, as well as one of the acts competing in that. So it should be a lot of fun. There's a lot of singing, but I've been told there may or may not be human jousting on, yeah, could be some interesting, interesting acts. So definitely put next Wednesday on your calendar, 6:30. And then Friday, February 7th, they will have face painting that evening from 6:00 to 7:00 ahead of the basketball game, so you can come get your school pride, put it on your face, and go cheer on the team. So that's it from Carson High's notes. Then I just have one for Mark Twain. This Thursday, January 30th, the PTO is hosting a Family STEM Night. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. Sierra Nevada Journeys is coming to sponsor and assist in all the activities. Carson High students will also be there working through, they're calling them Exploration Stations, and so obviously STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math. Each station will have a different vibe, so the kids can get hands-on experience with some of those, and there will also be a family project. So it's not just aimed at the kids, but the whole family will have things they can work on together. They are requesting RSVPs, and so if you are a student of Mark Twain, that would be in your, gosh, I just went blank. Parent Square. Thank you. Yeah, so that would be in your Parent Square to RSVP. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Trustee Peterson. And Rebecca, Trustee Roberts.
All right. So for Fremont, we, they have got the PTA Sock Hop on Friday, February 7th at 5:00 PM. We're excited to see more PTA events happening as more parents are becoming involved. I've been to the Sock Hop a couple times. It's a lot of fun. Kids have a lot of fun. They usually do like a hula-hooping contest, and there's snacks, and they've had like a costume contest as well. You can dress up in the era and everything. It's a lot of fun. And then Dr. Ward also said, we are super proud of our students and how they did on their MAP assessments. We're looking forward to more opportunities to show what we know. And that is it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Richard, Trustee Varner?
Yes, I just have a brief one from Fritsch Elementary. Principal Brown would like to announce that their Fritsch PTA is sponsoring a mother-and-son dance. It'll be this Friday, January 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Community Center, and tickets are still available at the door. So I'd encourage everybody to go. I mean, we've all been to the father-daughter dances, this is a mom-son dance. I think it'd be really cool, and I hope everybody goes out to support it. And that's all I have for now. But I would like to thank Dr. Ward for taking time out of her busy schedule yesterday. She squeezed me in to, so I could come and visit for just a few minutes with her.
Thank you, Trustee Varner, and we will move on to the Trustee Clappam.
Thank you. From Ms. Robinson at Carson Middle School, she says, this week, some of their culinary students will be joining the Carson High Culinary Class to experience what the high school has to offer. They're also very proud to have one of their students invited to participate in the All-State Middle School Band Ensemble in Las Vegas next week. They honored all of the straight A students and students with excellent attendance at a recognition rally last week, and she wanted to say thank you to the great support from the community. They were able to hold a drawing to reward students who have missed less than 10% of the school year, and they were able to give away a lot of great prizes, and it was fun to celebrate the students' hard work. And Mr. Connolly says at Eagle Valley, they raised $520 for the Alzheimer's Foundation with a hat and hoodie fundraiser on Friday, January 24th, and that's all he had.
Thank you, Trustee Clappam. Trustee Walt?
Yes, thank you. So for Empire Elementary School, Principal Virgil mentions that the students have showed higher-than-expected growth on their winter MAP tests in both math and reading. So they had an awards assembly to celebrate and had a great parent turnout. Staff, students, and parents are really happy with the progress that they're making. And then for the, I asked Superintendent Fueling for an update on Empire Elementary School's playground, and the lot line adjustment application was filled out and turned into the planning, Carson City Planning Division yesterday, and so they're waiting for approval there to then move forward with fencing.
Thank you, Trustee Walt. Trustee Walker?
So Sealer River Elementary School also is celebrating their winter MAP results. And for those of you who don't work in a school, when you hear a principal say that they're really excited about their MAP results, it's not easy to do. Right, Ms. Cook? I mean, so that's a celebration, so when a principal tells you that, make sure you pat them on the back because that's a lot of hard work from the kids and the teachers and to really move that needle. So congratulations to them. So students at Sealer River who met their MAP growth goals were rewarded with a free dress day, which reminds me, I recently participated in the Sealer River Dress Code Committee, and there were some students with some pretty strong opinions about the dress code, and I think they're giving Ms. Pryor a run for their money. I think that's pretty awesome. And they also have lots of raffle prizes for students who earn goals growing or doing their best, and they are going to have hot chocolate parties on Friday. So good things are happening at Sealer River.
Thank you. And for me, I want to thank Elizabeth Martinez for taking time to meet with me. She is our Director of Nutrition. She gave me an overview of our nutrition program, and I was very pleased to hear that our students are eating healthy. They are eating all cooked meals, not fried, nothing fried. The desserts are very low in sugar, so they're eating their, you know, vegetables and fruit. They're drinking their milk. So I was very pleased to see that we are feeding our students healthy meals. And so I also encourage the parents to go online and look at the menu just so they can get a better idea of what their children are eating. So I also had the opportunity to introduce Trustee Varner to the Partnership Carson CD Executive Director and the staff. They welcomed him with open arms, so he's going to be representing our Board with their Board. They're a wonderful group of people, and I have been serving with them for a few years, and I had not invited them to come to our meeting to present the partnership that we have, you know, the program that we have that is a very, very important program that is helping our students stay, you know, on the right track and make healthy choices. I did one last minute asking, and I said, can you please come and present? So hopefully, they will be coming to present to us in the near future. And then I will be meeting with Vice President Malden on Thursday. I'll be having lunch at Pioneer, so I'm looking forward to that, and I will be able to provide a report at our next meeting. So that concludes my report. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Five, Association Reports, and this is for discussion only.
Good evening, Madam President. Superintendent Feeling, Trustees, my name is Brian Wallace. I'm the President of the Ormsby County Education Association, also known as OCEA. We represent approximately 80% of the certified staff within the Carson City School District. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, I missed your first January meeting, but welcome everyone back for 2025. Trustee Walker for returning and wanting to continue to serve, and our two newest trustees for being willing to step up and continue all the hard work that this school district has put forth, especially as a school board, and the association looks forward to continuing to work with you throughout your terms and everyone else's terms. Thank you.
So Brian, you know, one of the things, when I meet with other school districts, it's not always the same relationship that we have with our associations, and even when we don't agree, we have strong relationships in this district. And so, you know, thank you for being a partner in that and kind of helping us keep the, you know, civility within our discussions and keeping the focus on kids, and that's a lot of credit to the leadership that you show and also the other associations.
Thank you very much, sir. It's gotten tiring sometimes when I go out throughout the state. I'm also a state officer for NSCA, their Vice President, and we don't have those other relationships out there, and I've heard it one too many times now that we all can't be like Carson City. I don't understand why they can't, because like you said, even when we disagree, we still always continue to take those steps backwards and put the kids center and then come back around full circle on those conversations and also live within our realities. We understand funding, and you can't take a school district to task over that when we need to go back down onto Fifth Street and take them to task instead. So we look forward to the legislative session also and hopefully closing some budget gaps.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, and this is public comment. I was told that we do not have online public comment. Do we have in-person public comment? Seeing none. At this time, I close public comment and move on to Agenda Item Number, let's see, Eight. We can do it now? We can, okay, wonderful. Okay. Okay, I was told that we are able to continue then. We will go ahead and go to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentation and Possible Action on FY 2024 Annual Independent Audit and Report on Financial Statements as Required per NRS 354.624, and this is for Possible Action. Mr. Spencer Windward and Mr. Davasilvan.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to recognize Mr. Silva. I don't know if he has official title. We're going to go with Auditor in Chief today. We appreciate his presence here. I also want to recognize Mr. Hamzakhan, who does a lot of great work on our audit, sitting behind us as well, and are very grateful for the work that they do to keep us compliant with statutes and several sub statutes that are based off of the work that comes in through this audit. So I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Mr. Silva to let him tell you all the good stuff.
Thank you, Spencer. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invite. And as Spencer mentioned, my partner, Hamzakhan, is behind me, and together between the two of us, we do about 80%, I would say, of your audit work, and every year, it's an absolute pleasure. I thought what I would do this evening is talk a little bit about the financial statement, and then I do have a series of housekeeping items to go over with you as well. First thing I'd like to point out is that, and this is truly the most important thing for you as Board Members, you have a clean opinion, and you might sometimes hear that called an unqualified opinion. I kind of don't like to use that term. I think clean opinion sounds a little bit better. So that's what you have, and certainly, it's the highest level of assurance that any CPA firm can provide, and it's the result of about 250 hours of audit work. So always a good thing to get. The other thing is that we are required by NRS to report on any known statutory violations when it comes to your financial administration. In Note Two to your financial statements, we explicitly say that none were noted. And once again, that is always a good thing as well. Let's see, the other thing that we typically report on is at the very back of the financial statement, and that is whether or not we have any audit recommendations that we believe are significant enough to include in the audit report, and we do not. So that's the third good thing to report on this evening. And the last, I would say, with respect to the financial statements themselves is, you know, typically, the general fund is really where a lot of folks place a great deal of emphasis, and for good reason. And your general fund, as of June 30th, 2024, had a very positive and healthy fund balance. So again, as of June 30th, 2024, that was in good shape, and there aren't any other funds included in the financial statements that report a negative fund balance. So another good checkoff, if you will. As far as housekeeping items, these are items that I'm required to report to you so that you're aware, and these are kind of boilerplate, but I've customized them as best as I could for you all. Every entity that receives an audit has accounting policies and procedures, and we're required to disclose in the audit report what those accounting policies are. And there's several pages of them beginning in the footnotes, and footnote number one includes your significant accounting policies. We're required to let you know whether or not there's been any significant change in those significant accounting policies, and there have not been. Likewise, with accounting estimates, accounting estimates are something every entity has, and they become part of the financial statements. We're required to report to you any very significant accounting estimates. And for you all, just like any other school district, or in fact, any other governmental entity in the state, the most significant accounting estimate by far is your PERS liability and the related deferred outflows and deferred inflows. All of those numbers are provided by Nevada PERS's actuaries. They do an actuarial evaluation every year, prepare reports, publish them. We take those reports and extract the numbers that are relevant to you all and report those in the financial statements. By the very nature of actuarial valuations, those are estimates, of course. The next item is whether or not there are any significant disclosures in the financial statements, just by the virtue of the fact that they're included in the financial statements. I believe that the disclosures are significant. So I look at this as being anything that has changed from year to year, there are no significant disclosures. There are also no unusual transactions. The next item is any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. I'm sure, just like with you all and the jobs that you have, our job is, you know, some days are great days, some days are good days, some days are not so such good days. Auditing is tough work, just like the work that you all do. But as far as clients go, you guys are a wonderful client. No difficulties in performing the audit. As a result of the audit work, we had, I think, three or four adjusting entries, and they've been provided to Spencer in his office, and as they always do... And as they always do, those audit adjustments get booked in the accounting records. Of course, we didn't have any disagreements with management. And we are not aware of management consulting with any other CPA firms in terms of the type of opinion that would be issued. And certainly, that would be an unusual circumstance because you guys do receive a clean opinion. Included in the financial statements, there's a section called Required Supplementary Information. And that relates, again, to that, to PERS that I talked about a few moments ago. And also to another liability, which is called your OPEB liability. Those are insurance benefits provided to retirees. So there's three or four pages included in your financial statements with significant data on those plans. And it's subjected to audit procedures, just like the rest of the financial statement is. And that is it, as far as the housekeeping items go. I realize I've run through this very, very quickly, so I'd certainly like to ask you if you have any questions that I can help with.
Any questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Trustee Vardner.
Thank you for the audit and all the work you did.
You're welcome.
Spencer, thank you for the great job you did. Without you and the superintendent, we wouldn't have got such a good report. But I kind of have a, not a semi-related question that I hope I can ask now, is with the new president making some freezes on grant funding and stuff like that, do we have any information yet that how it may impact school districts, if it will at all?
I will say, first, I got to say, I know how Mr. Walker feels when his MAPS tests turn out well. So, but in regard to your question, it is really very early in how that's going to look long-term, short-term. I have no concerns as far as NDE has really stepped up to the plate. And we met with them this morning. I know that the state superintendent and the superintendents, that the state education folks have been very, very gung-ho on tackling this and coming up with plans. What the state has done is they requested from all the districts to kind of get a 45-day estimate of what disbursements we'd have salary and contracted personnel-wise in those grants and get that to them so they could request those funds from the federal agencies prior to that freeze going into effect. And that should give us time for everything kind of shake out and see what happens with this. Again, I don't, my personal opinion, I don't feel that there's anything that's really a jeopardy long-term that funds education and students. Of course, my crystal ball works just as well as everybody else's.
Mr. Winward, can I interrupt? I believe our.
No, no. Before we go too far down the lane on this topic, because it's not on the agenda, I'm going to jump in and just help a little and let you guys all know that a federal judge in DC has blocked the funding freeze. So it's not in place at all right now.
That was, that was next.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Yep, go ahead.
Just because we have two new members that, you know, this is one of those things that takes a little bit of time to wrap your head around as a school trustee. You know, are there resources they could use between now and next year when we're doing this again to familiarize themselves with the process and?
In terms of the audit?
Yeah.
Yes, there are. One of the best, well, there are two that come to mind. One is ASBO, and I think you all are members of that. That's the American, what's the Association of School Business Officials. They provide a lot of resources in terms of being acquainted with the purpose of an audit, how an audit is conducted, and the results of an audit. The other one is GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. And they also provide publications, even online classes for school officials. So those are just two that come to mind real quickly. I'd be happy to look into others for you as well for the new trustees.
Okay. And at this point, if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, I guess.
Go ahead.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept the Carson City School District's annual financial report and audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and instruct the Chief Financial and Operations Officer to file the report as public record in accordance with NRS 354.624.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Vardner, second by Trustee Clapton. Any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your expertise. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your business.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Discussion on Potentially Establishing a Partnership with EDU Staff to Provide Substitute Staffing Services in the Carson City School District. And this is for discussion only. Mr. Andrew Feeling, Superintendent Feeling, sorry. Mr. Spencer Winward and Mr. Mark Dines. Did I pronounce her right?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Mr., is it Daines?
Dynas.
Dynas, wow. I would say it worse than you were. So.
I appreciate the effort.
All righty. Pleasure to have him with us this evening. He's going to give a little bit of presentation of some of the services that Edge of Staff provides to kind of give you guys a little bit of a background of why this conversation is coming and where it is. As district management, we've been looking at ways where we can really increase the fill rate of our substitutes. It's something that we've struggled with. We've tried things internally. We've kind of, you know, done what advertising we can with resources we have and really have not seen improvement in that category over the last couple of years like we'd like to have seen. So some of the objectives that we would like to do is increase that fill rate of substitutes. That's kind of the main objective. A sub-objective of that would be is to increase the pool of substitutes available. If we do that in the district, we assume that will increase our fill rate of subs. And then also, as part of that, increase our retention of qualified subs and increase the number of qualified subs through training. Take someone who maybe a few months ago decided they want to be a substitute teacher and have been through the minimum of what they need to for licensure, but help them be better when it's their turn to be in front of a class. And as also part of that increase in the fill sub rates, we really want to decrease the number of missed preps from our certified teachers. And every time they miss a preparation, the time they were going to spend doing their work in their classroom without non-student contact time, that's taking an hour away from their personal time or family time in the evenings to accomplish the tasks that they had slated for that. We feel that would really help with, you know, with burnout and overall satisfaction of job is to reduce those opportunities or those instances to as few as possible. Can they go away altogether? No, but we would like to see those be reduced. In addition, you know, we run a pretty lean staff in our HR and payroll departments. And, you know, rather, we can add staff, which costs money, or we can look at, are there tasks that we can reduce or shift or reallocate to reduce pressure on our office staffs at each of the schools, our administrations of the schools, HR and payroll personnel as well. So just to kind of give a little bit of a background, our fill rates from the last three years, or, well, FY 23 was eighty-four percent. Last year dipped to seventy-eight percent. This year, to date, we're sitting about seventy-six percent. As you know, there's a million and one variables that go into that, but that's something that we'd like to see that trend reverse and revert back to, you know, even be in the low nineties is kind of where I would love to see us as a district. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and turn some time over to Mr. Dynas and have him tell you what he knows.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Spencer. Thank you, President and board members, for the opportunity to share a little bit more about Edge of Staff. My name is Mark Dynas. I am a partnership consultant with Edge of Staff. Edge of Staff was established in 2010 solely focused on K-12. So the core business has been around substitute management or substitute staff, staffing. And so we currently have over 600 partnered districts. We have a ninety-nine point four percent retention rate with that. Our core focus is, like Spencer said, building up subpools, increasing fill rates. And so what I'd like to do is go through, share with you our service model, a little bit about the marketing, the training. And then I've pulled two examples that are very similar to Carson School District as far as where they're at in fill rates, demographics, and things like that that we can look at and see some of the results from that. And then we can end with some questions and answers. So our service model is a little bit unique in terms of we take a very local approach. And so if you look on the left side of there, we put a district manager in the community from the community, and we train them to be a district manager. When I say that, we provide weekly office hours on a regular cadence. So they're in the office, preferably having a cube, a desk, an office, easily accessible by the district staff. And it's very collaborative environment from that standpoint. The other thing, they're very active in the district itself, doing building visits, touching base with office managers, principals. Again, open communication, keeping the collaborative effort there. They play a crucial role in going out into the community, putting up signs, recruiting. And you see in the middle there, that is an actual district manager at a basketball event. And I'll talk more about the role that they play on the marketing side from that standpoint. Another major role that they play is an in-person classroom management training. So it's two hours. It's at the district. It would be in a boardroom, a conference room. There's a manual they walk through, and it preps the substitutes to enter a classroom. And I'll talk more about that on the training side as far as what's covered there. So the local approach is very important to this service model. If we move to the right side, the corporate piece, we back that up with a group of people that support from a macro level. So substitute support, we have a hotline. So as you can imagine, with that many districts using substitutes, there's a lot of questions. We provide them an avenue to answer those questions thus, so it alleviates that from maybe going through the district a little bit. We also have a macro marketing, which I'll talk about more on the marketing side. It's more digital marketing side of things, so I'll touch on that in a little bit. A big one is the human resources piece. And so what they do is they do applicant processing, screening, anything to do along the lines of HR. I'll give you an example. We have an employee feedback form. So if, for example, a substitute, maybe the feedback is that they work better in a high school versus grade school, we'll take that feedback. We will have that conversation with the substitute, and we'll make sure that that occurs within that. The other thing is they are also doing, as far as human resource side of things, sorry, I just lost my train of thought a little bit there. Yeah, they're there to support. Applicant processing, the screening side of things, we want to make sure that they're qualified in Nevada state law, can be a substitute. So we're monitoring that. I'll talk a little bit more about compliance from that standpoint. Payroll specialists, the district's assigned one. They're paid every other, or bi-weekly. And so that's usually a benefit to the substitute themselves, who's usually getting paid monthly. And that payroll specialist, when I talk about payroll, it includes everything from the federal income tax, paid time off, everything to do with payroll from that standpoint. Next slide. So moving on to the marketing side, and I'm going to start on the left. We talked a little bit about the corporate marketing support. That's the macro level. So all the social postings, like Indeed postings, LinkedIn, that will continue through the corporate side. We also want to get creative. So things like radio ads, Spotify, anything that gets the awareness out into the community that we're looking for subs for the district to build that pool up. Even YouTube is things that we've gone down that avenue. And I'm going to shift to the middle, back to the district manager. That local approach cannot emphasize that enough, putting up signage, being at local events. What we hear typically is that people are willing or want to be subs. They're just not aware of what the process is or that they can. And so getting out in front of them and communicating that and making them aware at these events is extremely crucial. And then the third part, the district manager being able to go to the local career and job fairs, again, feet in the street in the community. They go build relationships with the colleges has been very effective for us. Next slide. So now we're going to move to the training. So you build up the subpool. We don't want to stop there. We want to build a better sub. We want them to be prepared to go into the classroom. And so we take a three-phase approach. The first phase is the compliance training. And so you can see a list of the common ones there. But what we're going to do is, again, we're going to monitor that, make sure those three to four that they need annually to be compliant in the state of Nevada are addressed. And you can see some common ones like bullying, sexual harassment, child abuse. We will make sure that they're certified and qualified to go into the classroom. The second phase is that in-person, again, classroom management training. And so there's a manual that comes out with this. And being in person, I can't under, you can't underestimate how important that is because we get to meet the subs, we get to qualify them a little bit more, and we assume nothing. So it starts from where do you park? How do you dress? How can you interact with students? Is a fist bump okay? What happens if there's downtime? So we really want to make sure that they're ready to get into the classroom and be able to, you know, teach, not lose a day of teaching from that standpoint. And then the third piece is ongoing professional development. These are quick little two-to-three-minute videos that allow them to maybe enhance, you know, their trade, being able to maybe fill a gap. And so these are online, easily accessible, and it really helps with retention, I think, to be able to build that sub up. Okay, so here's a couple of the examples I had talked about. So Forest Grove is a district that's kind of rural. It's next to a larger city in Hillsborough, a larger district, similar size in terms of teachers. Three fifty, I think you have roughly four hundred. You can see before Edge of Staff, they were floating around that seventy-eight percent. So very similar to what's happening right now with Carson City. That service model, going in and building and finding subs and that local approach, feet on the street and partnering with businesses to get that word out, is very effective. If you look on the right, the subpool begins to grow, the fill rate's beginning to go up over time. And now they are consistently in that ninety-three percent range. Next one. Greater Albany, it's another district, very similar. They're sandwiched between a college town district, Oregon State University in Corvallis, and then Salem, which is a larger community. Five hundred teachers, so a little bit more. But again, right there at that seventy-eight percent, again, building that subpool over time, moving from two hundred all the way up to four hundred and fifteen subs, has really, really increased their fill rates. And then, yeah. And then finally, I just want to talk a little bit about substitute benefits because they are on the front lines, they're what this is all about and makes it happen. And so we want to make them feel inclusive, to not just Edge of Staff, but the partnership that we have with the districts. And so we run programs like, you see, like service awards. And so they can be nominated for an award. If they win that award, then we would want to do like a public display that you see on the left there. Maybe at this board meeting, I heard you, we're doing some recognition here. Maybe it's at an assembly, but give them a gift card or certificate and make them feel like they're doing a great job from that standpoint. Also, referral bonuses, unlimited hundred-dollar referral bonus. We also offer them medical benefits. It's a basic plan, but it is a plan where, you know, for a hundred and, I don't know, fifteen dollars a month, I think it is, they can have an entry level medical benefit plan. And they can even upgrade it to spouse for roughly another hundred dollars and family for, I think it's in the low three hundred dollars. There's also a 401K plan. It's the same plan that I have with Edge of Staff. And so, again, we want to support the substitutes and make sure that they're retained and feeling good. Next one. So final thoughts. There's a couple points on here that I just really want to call out. We have a sixty-day termination for convenience. And what that is at any time, if things are not working out, you can go ahead and give us sixty days and terminate the agreement. However, this is what I love, that retention rate that I mentioned earlier, that ninety-nine point four percent. With that in place and still having that, it just doesn't happen. We really engage in that partnership and make it collaborative to make sure that we're doing the right things by the district. But it is there should anything happen. The other one, too, I would like to call out is you can hire teachers from the subpool. There will be no fee to that. We want to do that because we want to support the sub. If that's going to better their career, that's great for them. And if it's good for Carson City School District, we want to support that as well. And so with that, I will kind of open it up to questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Molly.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, so I have a list of questions. But so first, is the pay that you pay the substitutes equivalent to what the district offers now?
So the district is always in control of the pay to the substitutes. They do not lose control. So whatever the rate is, we will abide by that. So whatever the rate is, we will abide by that.
Okay, and then the benefits package, one fifteen, sounds um great. But is it, would would it be with an insurance company that our local providers will accept?
It's through Edge of Staff, so I I it's not local um in terms of that. But what it does do, it's it's a very basic package. And in fact, to be transparent, it would probably be better for a sub if they have a spouse that has insurance to be on it. But it'd be more for somebody that at an entry level, say, that's doing Uber part-time and substituting it part-time. It would allow them to at least have insurance from that standpoint.
But we wouldn't be guaranteed that our medical providers are on town?
Oh, yeah, 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 it's a national program.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, misunderstood.
Um so I saw in here, I didn't see anything about a background check. Do you provide the background check, or would the substitutes pay for their own?
No, that so that's through the district as well, it would still continue as that that is. But we would support through the state and the background checks of the of the district of Carson City.
So are the substitutes district employees, or are they?
They're Edge of Staff employees, one hundred percent.
Okay, but the school district would still be?
So so they're, they still need a substitute license, which is given through the state, so there's background checking that happens with them.
Okay, okay, great. Um and then what happens when all the, you know, like, say, um the day there's, you know, forty-three substitutes needed? However, you know, because I know you can't guarantee, and you can only fill thirty-two of those positions, what happens to the other eleven? Who does that fall back on, Edge of Staff or?
That would that would still be similar to what happens now, is if 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 we had, like, for today, example, if we had forty-three vacancies and could only fill thirty-two of them, um then that's, those duties are being assigned out to other other staff in the building, other teachers are are missing their prep perrys to cover classes at the secondary levels, or they're splitting class at the elementary level.
But who's finding those teachers to fill those? Is it Edge, is it the Edge of Staff, or does it come back to the school site principal?
So Edge of Staff provides a lot of support in in finding those substitutes and getting those things. And there might be even a little bit of training with our current staff to show, hey, the sooner you get this out here, the better. And those kind of things will help that fill rate. There's still gonna be instances where someone wakes up at five thirty AM and realizes they're too sick to go to school. And uh, you know, Edge of Staff is gonna provide some support to try and fill that. Uh I can let you speak more to what your processes are on that. But that that's gonna be kind of a joint effort between them and also our office staff, which currently who's who's doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, we do have some strategies, uh we call them building subs. And so we assign building subs to a particular school, and if there's a last-minute vacancy, uh we can have them fill that on short notice because they're assigned to that particular school.
Okay. Um and then what happens when um, say, you know, I mean, there's several teachers out there that um how specific substitutes that they they like, would they still be able to give that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and then um you mentioned with the training, are the substitutes then paid for that training time?
So in Oregon, it's state law that they're paid, it's paid training, so yes. And I think that's kind of a little bit of a district uh decision in terms of you, is is paid training required in Nevada?
No, no.
So so it it could be, I think this is a district decision that it would have to come down to if it would want to be paid training or not paid training.
Okay, and then Spencer, to go back to the statistic that you gave with the um eighty percent, and then it went up to the seventy-six, is that um at a ratio of the absenteeism ra- rate? Or is that a consistent with the absentee rate of the teachers?
I'm not sure.
Because I know that, you know, you had stated that, you know, we're at a decline, right? Or I mean, um our rate of getting a substitute is now at seventy-six, where it was at eighty-three, and it has now decreased to seventy-six. But have we seen an increase of absenteeism with our teachers?
I I would have to, I didn't really analyze the data for the full number of absences we have. Um I think we might be slightly, yeah, I I would just be making a guess at this point on if we have more at this point in the year as compared to, you know, the two previous years.
Okay, because I just didn't know if maybe that's a reason why, you know, we are asking for more substitutes, because we're.
That that falls in that million and one variables of we have of of why people are absent. And and I do know sometimes we have trainings available to our certified teachers that we say, sorry, we're not gonna send you to that, because we need you guys in the classroom. So that would that would be another benefit of having a larger subpool is when those trainings are available to our certified staff, we're able to send them because we have someone to cover for them.
Okay.
I do know some of those have been postponed, rescheduled, because just, you know, due to the overall health of our community and number of people that are sick, it doesn't make sense to pull another eighteen teachers out on a day when we already have vacancies that we can't fill.
Right, so would this replace or eliminate, not replace, but would it eliminate Red Rover?
No, so Red Rover is actually, uh Edge of Staff works with whatever software vendor that for sub-management that we use. Um Red Rover is is one that they prefer to work with. And and so that does not eliminate Red Rover.
So do then they pay the Red Rover cost, or is that still gonna be a district cost?
They do not, I think under a a previous business model, they did have, did cover some of those costs of that. Uh they found it's better off if they've just reduced their their overall rate and have us cover that, since it's our data that lives in there, it's our people, we own that, it makes a little bit better sense to keep it that way.
Okay, and then last question, uh what is, what would be the fiscal impact of the school district?
I'm glad you asked, next slide please.
Oh, you were waiting for that one?
No, so um just a couple of things. Um so this shows what the uh the effective benefit percentage rate is as compared to our salary or our substitute salary costs are. Uh because we kind of explored this, we went down this avenue a couple of years ago, right? At that point in time, our our effective benefit rate was nine percent. Didn't really make sense to do anything different from what we were doing. There's been legislative changes, uh things have changed, and FY twenty-four, that almost doubled. And from twenty-five to date, it it has more than doubled. And that doesn't even include if we have teachers that go over their hours limit and are subject to uh to perrys, so. So that percentage is not going to get any lower at this point in the year, but it could get higher. So given that, that's kind of where, hey, it makes sense to really revisit this issue uh uh from the fiscal side, not just the, hey, we want to meet all those objectives that I talked about in the first slide. So given that, that's kind of where we started looking down this road once again, uh looked at all options. We we looked at, you know, what happens if we add a staff member to our HR team? You know, there's costs associated with that, and we feel like it's, wouldn't be as beneficial as adding a team of of people to our disposal. What we've budgeted for our sub benefits this year is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And so those costs, by partnering with Edge of Staff, they shoulder all those costs, they cover the sub benefits. We just pay, you know, what our sub rate is, plus their contract contractual amount, and they take care of those. So that two hundred and seventy-five is no longer an expense that we have. In exchange, though, we pay Edge of Staff's fee, which is percentage-based, it's not flat rate. So if we have a really healthy year and no one ever goes on vacation or gets sick or has funerals, and they come to school for a hundred and eighty-three out of a hundred and eighty-three days, then that, their fee goes down. It's based, you know, it's percentage based off of number of vacancies filled. Uh which is good in one turn too, because they want to increase our fill rate, because that's better for them. So just to kind of extrapolating where we're at from this point in the year and kind of pushing that out if we had similar ratios throughout the rest of the year. Um our costs for if Edge of Staff, if we'd been with Edge of Staff for this year, it'd be approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So that's seven thousand more than what we budgeted for those sub benefits, which is pretty minimal. And that's the kind of, um just to mention, as far as fiscal impact, if we look at our sub-salary costs plus those benefit costs, everything we have in there would have covered all of our sub-salary costs plus uh Edge of Staff fees for the year. So it'd be a cost-neutral uh or better fiscal impact. There's a secondary item um that comes with um increasing our fill rate. So if we have, uh uh again, ignoring all of the intangibles of, it's not, maybe not healthy for our staff to miss their preps and do extra work in the workday that they weren't expecting. Uh side note, my wife teaches in Lyon County, and I got a text from her this morning with sad face emoji that she was gonna be pulled from her regular teaching duties to do something else. And so it's real, it's, there's an emotional effect to when you come to work and your day changes and you have more responsibility than what you'd planned on that morning. So it, for that so, that fill rate that we're at seventy-six percent, each percentage point that we fill that is increased savings to us as a district. And that's because the cost of a day of missed preps is about a hundred and fifty dollars more per day than the cost of sub plus um Edge of Staff fees would be. So for, is that seventy-six percent a- as we project and as as we hope that over the course of a year, two years, that that increases, then we have additional savings. And to break even for that seven thousand dollars that we didn't budget for in that exact line item, even though there's budget authority to cover all of it, two percent increase, and we're at a break-even point. So it just a ten percent, just because I I think that's something that would be very much achievable over the course of a fiscal year, or maybe a fiscal year or two, and that's about a forty-five thousand dollars estimated additional savings. So cost-neutral or better.
Go ahead, I believe, I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard, you have a question?
Uh I do. I'm wondering, the current subs we have now, would they have to apply to get hired by your staff? And what's the process for them?
That's a great question, uh yes, so we would transition the current subpool over to Edge of Staff. It's a simplified version, so there's actually, one of the first things we do on the kickoff meeting is we ask a lot of questions and build an application that's online. There's two models to that, uh there's a checkbox for existing subs, because they don't need to do necessarily all the annual compliance, because they've already done it, they're a current sub. So it's kind of an expedited, easy route, they don't need to do the classroom manager, because they're already doing substitute work. So we make it very simple for them to complete that process, as opposed to a new sub that really needs to go through everything, the mandatory in-classroom management training.
Trustee Roberts, I believe you had your hand up?
Well, we're all on the same page, because that was all of my questions between the two, so thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Walker?
Well, I was just gonna say, a couple thoughts that I have is, I think Spencer hit the nail on the head when, in addition to monetary savings, it's a morale issue. You know, at my school today, we started one sub down, and so all of our PLC meetings were impacted. Then by the middle of the day, some of you had to go home and get their sick kid. And so then all PLC meetings were canceled, so it upended all plans. But I think that it also, it causes a lot of stress for the teachers, because they come in and they're counting on that time to prep for the afternoon lesson. So if I leave, if I leave on Tuesday and I'm prepared through lunch, and then I'm planning on lunch and prep to get my afternoon prepared, and all of a sudden I don't have that, you're scrambling and you're not having lunch. And so I think that as we're looking at ways to keep our employees happy and successful and wanting to stay in our district, having subs is one of the ways to do that. And then as a principal, I I really liked the training component, because there's times you get subs and you're like, why in the world? And, you know, I was kind of geeking out on some of the topics, and I don't know how mandatory it is, but I mean, even, oh, nuts, allergies in the classroom, I mean, these are real things that, you know, you have a sub and all of a sudden the diabetic kid ate a cupcake in class, and we're calling mom and going to the nurse's office. And, you know, so training, I think, is huge, and there's not a lot of time for substitute teachers to truly be trained and prepared, and we count on them to protect these kids. So I think it sounds like a good idea.
Go ahead, Molly.
Um thanks, yeah, no, I wish there was a guarantee, you know, that, I mean, it would be great if you could come here and say, I guarantee you'll always have a filled day um of substitutes, but we know that that isn't um reality. Um so the, my last comment would be, um I know this is only a discussion item, and I'm not, you know, against it, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I know we would be the only school district around us or even in the state to go this route. So it would, you know, be possibly a great adventure to kind of see if it works. But I'm concerned at getting into a contract when we haven't seen the budget. You know, like entering into any type of contract from now until the time that we see the budget is um, unless it's like built in in there and, you know, it, that's where I get a little nervous, is like saying that, okay, we're gonna go into this contract and this contract and and moving forward when we really don't know what the budgets, as board members up here, we don't know what it looks like. We have absolutely no idea if you're gonna come and say we're gonna be at a three-point-four million-dollar deficit this year. Um I just know that, you know, we got an email last week saying, hey, you know, we, there's some things that we need to to possibly cut out. So it's looking like, you know, that we may not have the revenue that we had hoped for. Um and so that's where I just would like for some caution to be, yeah.
The question I have, because I don't disagree with you, but looking at the comparison, we already are gonna have to make, whether there's a deficit or not, we're still gonna have to prepare for substitutes and the benefits, and we're still gonna have staff to manage that. Whereas with them doing that, that frees up our people to do other things. So I guess it's kind of a balancing act, but that's one of the things I think we always struggle with on a school board is that budget is always the unknown, and we never know really until it's the end of the year. And it's like, oh, good, we guessed right. So it's it's kind of crazy that so much counts on our decisions, but we do so much projecting and just hoping that the estimates are right, I guess.
I mean, in all honesty, I'm not, I'm not used to it, it's not how the city did it either. You know, when they brought things forward to the to the board, it was always that fiscal impact and how you could see it affecting the budget now and moving forward. Um so it's just something that, you know, I, just makes me a little nervous.
Go ahead, Trustee Peterson.
I just had a question about, um what's the process like for severing a relationship if there's a sub that um has gone in once and one school says, absolutely not, we do not want that person back? Are they still in the pool to go to a different school, is there like a three-strikes year out? What is the process on that, and whose job is it to pull the plug on them?
That's a great question as well. So our, the HR team that I had mentioned earlier, that would be really part of that employee feedback form. So if there was an issue like that, you would call that to our attention, we would have that tough conversation. I'm gonna go back to that the district is in control. So if you want to keep the sub maybe for one particular school or one particular area, you could go ahead and do that. But if it was a termination-type situation, then we would handle that and take that termination and have that conversation.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Um and you said, like, you can have subs assigned to specific areas, but are they also able to just kind of like see what's available that day and pick and choose as well?
Yeah, another great question, and that's where Red Rover comes into play on that. They they would use that as they are doing it today, and they can see the vacancies, select the ones that they want to go ahead and use. And I think you had mentioned earlier somebody about um if there's a particular sub that a school wants to keep using, that can be arranged as well.
Go ahead, Trustee Gardner.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little confused, uh what is the total amount of the contract cost? Is it the two eighty-two, does that cover everything, or is that on top of the subs' um pay?
So it it is percentage-based, so just to use a a round, easy number, if we paid a substitute a hundred dollars, then we pay a twenty-six percent on top of that to Edge of Staff. So we would pay Edge of Staff a hundred and twenty-six dollars. They cover all of the sub benefits, Medicare, Social Security, uh unemployment, workers' comp, they cover all of those employer expenses. And then they pay the hundred dollars to the sub, gross pay the same as if we paid the gross pay of a hundred dollars to a sub. So it's it's percentage-based, so, you know, the number of sub-days we have is that amount plus the twenty-six percent of Edge of Staff's fee, and and that's what works out. And and like I say, currently, uh we're seeing about eighteen point six percent of of what uh covering those benefits that that Edge of Staff would ourselves. So that's why there's, you know, it's, there's not a lot of difference in what our estimate would be for what they would cover, uh what our cost would be if we'd been with Edge of Staff this year as opposed to how we currently are. So that's that's where it doesn't give me, uh, you know, like I say, if we were, hey, you know, this is three hundred thousand dollars a year, whether w- we fill ten sub-days or a thousand sub-days, then that that would be scary to me, because, you know, if we were only filling ten sub-days, that's really expensive markup. But since it's percentage-based, it goes with the the ebb and flow of the number of subs that we use. Um which, again, that's one of the harder things that we have to budget for, because we don't know, you know, if we're gonna have another COVID year where people coughed funny and can't come to work for ten days, or, you know, or or whatever. So that that is one of the, one of the more challenging items to budget for.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Um and you said the district sets the rates, are we planning on keeping that the same? And you said the district sets the rates, are we planning on keeping that the same for the subs, still paying them what they're getting now?
We wouldn't make any change for this fiscal year. That might be the kind of thing that typically each summer we kind of look at, we, we compare, you know, districts around us to make sure that we're staying competitive and, and we would have control as a district of saying, hey, we should bump this up or we need to keep this the same because our budget came in flat from the state government. So we have control over that and, and probably even maybe a little bit more flexibility to make mid-year, midstream changes or even, you know, if we have a school that's really struggling, that's one thing that we'll get additional data from edge of staff saying, hey, we have a school that their fill rate is at 60%, whereas a district you're at 80, let's offer a temporary incentive to get subs there. So, because maybe it happens that someone, you know, someone badmouths the school and the subs are like, oh, I'm staying away from that one. But if they can be incentivized to go in there and find out, oh, that really wasn't true, this is just as good as working anywhere else in the district, then they can bring those fill rates per school up. So provide some additional flexibility and, and more data and, and support from edge of staff to kind of help us with those nuances that currently we're just very reactive and looking at, oh, three months ago, we see that this school was really low, how come?
Okay.
Could I follow up a little bit on that, Spencer, too? That data is important and one of the things that I failed to mention was that that onsite district manager does a quarterly business review and that data is prevalent and allows you to zero in on areas that need attention. And so that, those meetings and that local presence is very important to be able to make adjustments accordingly.
And then one more question, when the teachers are having to cover extra, are they getting compensated for that at all or?
They do, to compensate a day through, through covering teachers, teachers miss preps is much more expensive than, than covering with a sub.
Okay, and that was that number?
Yeah.
It was like $150?
Yeah, it's about $150 more than our, than our average sub cost.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. I think that's everything.
Trustee Peterson, did you have another question?
Yeah, I did. So the local representative, where are you guys, are you based in Oregon? Is that?
So corporate is in Grand Rapids, but we also have an office in Oregon. What we would be doing is hiring an individual locally in the community.
And would that individual be on your payroll or ours?
Yes, yes, that's all inclusive in that rate that Spencer had talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I believe we don't have any more questions, no? Thank you so much for your presentation, this is a wonderful, it sounds like a wonderful program, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Okay, agenda item number nine. Discuss, discussion and possible action to approve the proposed Carson City School District academic calendar for the 2020, 25, 26 school year, and this is for possible action. Mrs. Tasha Fuson.
Good evening, President Ramirez and members of the board, Tasha Fuson for the record. So it's that time of year that we get us at our school calendar for the following year. We do it this early in the year so that our families have time to plan and our employees have time to plan in advance for like travel and family events, graduations, et cetera. When I go through the proposed calendar, I will point out, you know, if, if there was differences from this year's calendar and I also go through and do a comparison to Lyon and Washoe County since they are bordering districts. Douglas has not posted their calendar, we approve ours before they approve theirs, so the past couple of years I haven't had the opportunity to share Douglas's with you, but I will go through that. I want you to know that there is quite a process that we go through to bring this calendar to you. So it starts basically with Ms. Renee mocking up a calendar for me that resembles or looks like, you know, if it was this year's calendar for next year, let's just start with having the, having an overlay. So what would this year's calendar look like next year? And then I bring it to our cabinet meeting, which has all of our, not our cabinet, excuse me, our principals meeting, which has all of our department directors as well as our principals. And we go through, okay, what were the challenges this year? Were there things that didn't quite work for us? Are there things coming up next year? Do we, what does the testing schedule look like? What do we know that's gonna come out from the state that we have to adhere to? Do we need to make adjustments based on that? And then we make some, we make some shifts if need be. And then I have the principals take it back to their schools. I have them meet with their leadership groups and I have them meet with their parent advisory groups and get feedback from them and bring me the feedback and we make a change and make some updates based on that. And then I send it out to all of the association groups. I give the opportunity for the association groups to come back with their feedback from their members and things that they want us to consider. And then I, I bring all of that together to you as a, as a board. So you can see on the top of this one, for instance, it says draft C because this is the third calendar based on all that feedback. So you all have the final approval authority, but that is our process, that's what the process that's used to put this particular draft together. So our proposed start date for the upcoming school year is August 18th. That's the third Monday in August, that is our traditional start date. We did start two years ago on the second Monday and I got a lot of not happy feedback from that, that year. People thought the summer was too short and we were starting way too early. So last or this year, we went back to that third Monday. So we're looking to keep it at that third Monday, it seems to be that nice sweet middle spot. I will tell you though, because of the way the calendar falls this year, with that start date being on the 18th, for our secondary students, it means that they will actually have to continue their semester, their first semester after winter break. So in the past, we've tried to finish first semester before winter break for secondary, but there is not with this proposed calendar enough seat time. So for our new trustees and just as a reminder for returning trustees, in order for our secondary students to get credit for courses, you have to have 60 hours of instruction per class for, it's a Carnegie unit, if you've heard of a Carnegie unit. So that's what we have to actually take and look at, how many days do we have? How many instructional minutes do we have? And then break that down by the number of classes that the schools have and are there 60 instructional hours within that in order for us to award that credit. So it is gonna require secondary schools to not end their first semester until the week after winter break. Washoe's calendar is set, they would start Monday, August 11th, that's one week earlier than us, that's pretty typical for Washoe. Lyon is gonna start Tuesday, September 2nd, they shifted to starting after Labor Day. So that's, they're, they're the latest of all districts and Clark County will start Monday, August 11th, so the same as Washoe. So all districts start at different times there. Our fall break, which is the whole week of Thanksgiving, just again for our new trustees, I want you to know, we did take a look at our attendance data, we made that shift, I want to say it was three years ago, and it was because average daily attendance for students on that Monday and Tuesday and for our teachers were very low. So as a district, we took that into consideration and said, well, if we're gonna have a fall break, it makes sense to have it on that Thanksgiving week, especially since we have such a hard time getting students to attend school as well as teachers, to be honest with you. So that's why we have our fall break during that Thanksgiving week. Washoe actually just has the Wednesday through Friday off, Lyon and Clark also, so they don't take the Monday and Tuesday off, theirs is Wednesday through Friday. Washoe actually has an entire week before that, as most people know, they have what they call their balanced calendar, so they have a full week off from October 6th to October 10th. The way Washoe does their calendar is they do their first quarter, then they take a week off, they do second quarter, they have two weeks off, they do third quarter, they have two weeks off and then they end the school year. So theirs is what they call the balanced calendar, so they have an additional week too. Winter break for us would run on December 22nd through January 2nd with a teacher PD day on January 5th with our school back in session, all students coming back on the 6th. Basically, all districts have the same winter break. That's pretty typical. Our spring break would run April 6th through April 10th, it's the week after Easter in our district, we've always anchored that around Easter per family and community preferences. Other districts do not do that. Washoe has a two-week spring break from March 23rd to April 3rd. Lyon is the same week as ours and Clark is March 16th to March 20th, so they're quite, quite a bit earlier as well. The proposed last day of school for the year would be Thursday, June 4th. Washoe ends on the 5th, Lyon ends on the 12th and Clark actually ends on May 22nd. So Clark ends really early. We have three contingency days for inclemental weather, that inclemental weather that's required by NDE, so that's June 5th, June 8th and June 9th. That's in case we have snow days and have to bring our folks back. Start and end times currently are the same for all schools, but you may have been hearing that Carson High is discussing potentially a different bell schedule and different, different, adding an eighth, eighth period. So that will be going out, I'm sure, to parents more so if that ends up happening. I'm sure Principal Carstens will be coming in front of you and talking to you about his process and looking at that. But if you're hearing some, some chatter, that is occurring currently though, we are intending for all schools to start and end at the same time that we've had in the past. So just want you to know, we know that's being discussed over at the high school. Yes.
Very high level. How would that impact transportation district wide?
So the Principal Carstens has reached out to both human resources, so Mr. Sadler and myself, to make sure that, that their proposed, what they're looking at meets the requirements in the, the contract with OCA in terms of the, there is within the teacher contract, amount of instructional time that you can require a teacher to do per week as well as you have a required amount of time that you have to get for prep periods. Then for me, for the calendar as we're talking about today, it has to do with that Carnegie unit and having 60 minutes per, per class. And then transportation is always the other concern, so transportation has been consulted as well. Really, the new schedule would end up lengthening their school day by seven minutes is what it would be. Right now, this is a total sidebar, but Carson High School has the shortest school day of all schools in our district and it's very interesting because by state law, they're the required to have the most instructional minutes of all great levels, but they have the shortest day, just as an aside. But that will be coming up and I know that, you know, we're a small town, so anytime a school starts talking about something, then everybody hears it. So yes, we know that it's occurring, yes, it is occurring, but that information, I know Principal Carstens will be reaching out to families and getting student input to. Right, right now, he's just working on it with staff. So other items of note, again, I think most of you know this, but for our new trustees, under state law, we're allowed to have five professional development days within the school year. In our district, we separate that time out to have two minimum days per month. So it comes down to instructional minutes and it comes down to the minutes of the day, et cetera. So we separate ours out to do that. The exception is November, normally we do it on the second and fourth Wednesday, that was requested by our board a couple of years back too, to have a pattern of when those minimum days were. So they are on the second and fourth. The exception to the calendar that you're looking at right now is the month of November, which is the third Wednesday and that's due to the Veterans Day weekend. We thought it would not make sense to have a four-day weekend and then come back and have a minimum day and then have two days. So that just, that was a request by OCA, which I thought made a whole lot of sense. So I said, I'll, I'll present it to the board, so that's the reason for that one. We also added that November 10th off, which is just a non-school day because the thought was our attendance would again be very poor on that day because Tuesday is Veterans Day. So we have to have Tuesday off. So within our, within our calendar, we have 180 days for students and we have 183 days for teachers. So we put sometimes random days off in there so that we finish when we finish. I want you to know, we used to finish earlier, before Memorial Day weekend and there was a, our, our parents at Carson High School that are on the Safe and Sober Committee came and made a presentation to the board probably like 10 years ago. I want you to know, it's been quite some time, but they did not want school ending before Memorial Day weekend because they put on all those activities for senior graduations and it's really, really expensive on Memorial Day weekend, apparently. So that was actually a request from our parents at that point in time to, can we end the school year after Memorial Day weekend? And so we have traditionally now for the past 10, 10 years, added just extra days off here and there throughout the school calendar. So you do see some of those in there, that's why, it's just to actually lengthen the school year so that we don't end until after Memorial Day weekend. So there's some historical knowledge there for everyone. For our minimum days, we spend that time in PLCs as well as doing professional development or professional learning for our staff. We do as best practices, we ask our teachers to meet weekly in PLC meetings, so really on their weeks off and you've heard trustee Walker talking about that, but on weeks that we don't have those minimum days, our teachers actually give up their prep periods to do that one day a week to have those combined PLCs. So having those minimum days every other week also keeps that down because in our contract, we've agreed not to pull teachers during their prep periods on days or weeks that we have minimum days. We also have, just as a side note for all of you, because the way the calendar works for us, we actually are not, we're on a, what we call a non-traditional calendar. If you're on a traditional calendar in the state of Nevada, you have 180 instructional days and it doesn't matter how, you have a minimum amount of time that's required each one of those days or you can be on a non-traditional calendar, which doesn't require you to stick to 180 days, but you have to count up instructional minutes. So we're on a non-traditional. And our calendar and the amount of time that our kids and teachers spend in school means that our students in elementary school actually have 38 more school days by instructional minutes, not by days. So again, taking that a minimum day has to be, I should have written that down, but I have it in front of me, but say for instance, if you have to have equivalent to 300 minutes, right, or five hours of instructional time in a day and then you have to have over that, over 180 days, that's how many minutes you have to have a year. Are you following with me? And so for us, our instructional money, uh, minutes actually equate to 38 days more than the state requires. We could shorten our school schedule by 38 days and meet state requirements for elementary schools. Our middle schools have 16 extra days basically by instructional minutes and our high school has six. That's why I was saying, it's actually kind of funny and not a bad idea for Carson High to actually extend theirs a little bit because you are required by state law to have more instructional minutes for sixth through 12th graders than kinder through fifth. It's all in, based on minutes. So, so that is just a sidebar that I like to put out there and make sure that the board is aware, right? Because sometimes people say, well, why do we have this many minimum days? Or why do we allow professional learning days? Or why don't we have kids go two more weeks? We already have 38 days more of instructional time than is required by state law, which is good, it's good for our kids.
And I, what I think is so crazy is that even knowing that, there's not enough time in a school day.
Right.
By the time you look at lunch and recess and all the things, it's really tough to fit everything in there. And so I can't imagine if we cut it back, I mean, it's a challenge to get the standards in as it is now, I can't imagine if we shortened it.
Right. We've talked about in the past, AJ and I, you know, well, what would a four-day school week look like in our district? I mean, I don't think our community has any desire for that. We may as teachers, but I don't think our community has any desire for us to, but we technically could, that's what I'm saying, is we have so much instructional time for elementary that we could have four-day work weeks and meet the state requirements for instructional time. But also, as you all know, we have built-in time at the beginning of the year, we have for new hires, we bring them up five days earlier than our, our returning teachers, so we do professional development and training for them for five days. For our returning teachers, they come back three days before school starts, two days are used for professional learning and one day is a teacher work day. So that will, that's continued in that calendar. So, yeah. So basically, I'm seeking approval and adoption of this calendar from the board so that then I can move forward with informing our community. I want you to know, after you approve it, I still have to do a state application, which is not fun. It's the highlight of my year, just wanna say, Ms. Renee, you need to bring, all of you need to bring me and Ms. Renee some Starbucks or some coffee during the month of April as we're working with NDE to try to get our state calendar approved. Just, it's a tedious, awful process, but by you approving this, that gives us the ability to start on that wonderful process early and get that done. But until we get approval from NDE, technically, our calendar is not approved. So you're, you're the first approval level, then we have to apply to the state to have it approved. And then once they approve it, then we can actually, you know, move forward with implementation.
Got it. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Rebecca?
Just one typo, I see that it says first day of school for kinder is August 20th in the like green section and then on the right side, it says August 21st. I think that just got bumped over from last year's.
Probably, thank you. We will make that correction.
Yes. And then just a question with what you were saying about 38 more days than required. As someone who came from a four-day, it's really nice. So maybe that's something that can be looked at again since it was a while ago that, you know, see what the community thinks, what parents think. I don't think it'd be a bad idea to put feelers out there as well as what teachers think and, or is it possible that for the elementary schools, it could be a shorter school day? I just know, at least with my kids, it's a really long day, they're not getting home until after four o'clock, once they're off the bus and we're home and they're exhausted and then there's homework. home, and they're exhausted, and then there's homework. And so, I mean, if there's that many extra days, would it be possible to, you know?
I really appreciate that comment. You are the first person who's ever asked me to consider a shorter school day. But I am happy, absolutely happy to look into that. And I mean, I truly mean that. Most of the time, I'm asked by several people on this board how I'm going to make sure that students have proper care after school or during the minimum days, and have we had a plan for that? Which is, I don't, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I get that, but I'm like, that's, that's a new perspective. So yes, we can definitely look at it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I was just going to comment on the November 19th. Thank you. Also, I feel like that's a heard feedback kind of thing because like this year, coming back from winter break, we had that Monday off and then immediately had a half-day Wednesday. And I already heard from people about how, what, this doesn't make sense, why are we doing that? So good call from the local and from you guys for bumping that down to the 19th in November. And then thank you for explaining, I was wondering why, like racking my brain, what is the holiday at the end of September on the 29th? Why do we have that day off? I could not match it. Like the other ones match with like Veterans Day or Memorial Day, but that one just was kind of floating by itself. So thank you for pointing out that sometimes you just pull a day and that's okay. So thank you for all your hard work and I will do my best to bring you coffee.
Thank you.
Richard, I believe you had a question? No? Okay, Rebecca, you do have a question?
Yeah, just one more really quick. With sometimes you pulling a day, usually spring break is like that week and then the Monday. So is that where that got pulled and put somewhere else this year?
Correct. Yes. And that is exactly the one that I pulled to put with veterans. And like I said, the request was for that veterans just because of, you know, the oddity of Monday. But yes, that's exactly.
Good amount of time to have some fun, so.
Yeah.
It's a good one to pull it from.
There are no other questions? I will entertain. Oh, you do. I'm sorry, Molly. Go ahead.
So this year, we have the week before Easter off, and then we have the Monday after Easter off. Is there a reason why we're doing the week after Easter this year?
That's exactly what we were just discussing.
But no, we did the whole week.
Okay. So, so we typically give them Monday off, so, and that's been, I believe that's actually in contract that we give Monday after Easter off. So this year, because I wanted to pull a day from that spring break week to give to the November four-day weekend for, right up against Veterans Day.
What I'm saying though is this year, we have, spring break is the week before Easter.
Yes, and I'm explaining that. So because I pulled a day, so we typically have a six-day spring break, the week before, five days before, and the Monday after. So it's six days. I wanted to make it five days so I could pull that random day from spring break and put with the November weekend to make that a four-day weekend. So yes, we could have come to school Monday and then had Tuesday through Friday off and had the following Monday, but I pulled a day from there. So instead of having us not have a full week off together, I flipped it to the week after. So in our district, we either usually have it the week before or the week after. I usually do it depending on how far in the spring it's falling, because I do try to even out those, those holidays for, for teachers and families, right? So in this particular year, it's, it is actually a, the first week of April instead of being later. So that's kind of where I flip. But yes, so this year, it's the week before. Next year, I would have put it the week after, but specifically the reason why I did that was so that it wasn't six days, it was five days. And we always have to give them Monday after Easter off. So that was one of the issues that we have to, the parameters that we have to work around.
Are you good, Molly? Go ahead.
I was going to make a motion.
You're going to make a motion? Are there any other questions or comments before he makes a motion? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So to, excuse me, Trustee Peterson's concern about September 29th not being a holiday, it actually is. It's National Coffee Day. I just, I just looked that up, so.
There you go. National Coffee Day.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I moved at the Carson City School District Board of Trustees, approved the 2025-2026 academic calendar. Do I have to put a change in there for that date, the 20th that Ms. Roberts mentioned?
No, you can just say as presented.
As presented.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Trustee Clappam, second by Trustee Walker. Any board discussion seen on? Any public comment seen on? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Tasha, thank you so much for all that work that you do on the calendar. It's really a lot of work that you put into that.
And I so appreciate all of you. I know it looks so wonky, and people ask me all the time, why does that look so wonky? I'm like, there's really a reason that that doesn't look just beautiful the way we would think it should, right? But thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
And I think when it comes to calendars like that, for every happy person, there's probably two unhappy people.
As an aside, just so you know, too, we have actually pulled data on our, like where our employees come from. So how many of our employees come from, for instance, that live in Washoe, and how many live in Lyon, and how many live in Douglas? And we've done that comparison to try to kind of align calendars even with those because it's hard for our families that have children that are in different districts, too. But they're so different. They're, they're so different that there's just really no way to, you know, meet them. And we have about a third of our, we're like 25%, like 25% of our folks live in Carson City, like 25% live in Lyon, 25% live in Washoe, 25% live in, right? So exactly, that's exactly what you're saying, right? If we kind of aligned more with Washoe, great, our Washoe people would be super happy, but our Lyon people would not. And our, yeah.
Okay.
And we do have to align it with sports. So Molly, that's a good point, because we do.
We're going to move on, sorry.
Can I just ask one last quick question? Sorry, I know we're wanting to move on, but is there ever, so I've had kids in Jump Start and the spring breaks never align, so we always are fighting on that. Has that ever been a consideration to, rather than aligning with our neighbors, to look towards the WNC spring break?
Yes, but they don't align with Easter and our, and our Monday off. But we could. That's another thing the board could consider.
Okay. All right. Back to the agenda. Exactly. Okay, agenda item number 10, discussion to eliminate CCSD Regulation 331 dot 1, duplicate compensation prohibited and CCSD Regulation 331 dot 2, travel requests due to inclusion of renumbered Regulation 1060 travel and per DM allowances for discussion only. Ms. Tasha Peterson.
Thank you. So just to make that much easier to understand, I redid this policy, updated it in March of 2023, as most of you remember, and renumbered our policy and regulation 331 to the 1060s. It's actually 1060 now because we took it from certified staff and moved it into all staff because it also impacts classified staff. So in that, when we did that, we, we updated as well. I, I missed the fact that there was a 331.1 and a 331.2 at that point in time, and I should have at, at that same point in time omitted them. So it's cleanup that we're doing right now in 331.1. It talks about duplicate compensation prohibited. So as I looked at this and spoke to Dan Sadler, this information that's in here really doesn't relate to travel. It's kind of a, an aside, and this information actually relates to teachers not being paid, like we cannot pay teachers to go to training and then actually you let them use it for salary incremental increases. So this information is important, but it goes in a different place, not in travel. So that's why we're looking to admit it from, from our regulations.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Can you explain that again? So the training can't be used for?
So we cannot pay a teacher to go to training, like to attend training. If you attend training and it's during your contract time, you don't get to, to earn credit for salary increments. You do get to earn time for, for your license, so your professional credit hours, but not for salary increases, right? Because we're paying them to attend, so it would be basically double dipping.
Double dipping, yep. Yep. Okay.
I have one on, on the 1060 on page two. I was looking and it's at the top, it says overnight lodging within 50, and the next section is beyond 50 miles. But then the very first line says that when you travel out of state. I wondered, like that confused me a little bit because you can travel more than 40 miles and stay in-state. So I don't, I don't really know what my question is, except that seemed like a, I don't know, like a mismatch that it specified out of state.
So because we're so close to the California border, our folks often go over the border, you know, like to South Lake Tahoe, et cetera. So that's why, but that's still less than 40 miles. So I think that's why it differentiates between the three. So out of state, which would be different than just 40 miles, like you said, in-state. So I think it has the three different levels of specification.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Instead of just going by mileage?
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So thank you, Tasha. It looks like this was a discussion only item. We're good?
Yep, I got, yep. But I have one more for you, don't I?
Okay.
Or were they together?
They were together.
Oh, sorry. We talked about putting them together, we talked about separating them to make it more sense, and then we put them, we actually put them together. My, my apologies. And then 331.2, the reason why we're admitting that is because that information was actually embedded in 1060. So I did not mention that earlier. Sorry, I didn't realize we put them together, back together again. All right. Thank you.
All righty. Agenda item number 11, discussion and possible action. I'm sorry? Oh, oh. Okay, let's try this again. Discussion and possible action on the process for recognizing the 2025 Carson City School District Employees of the Year, Educational Support Professionals of the Year, Certified Educators of the Year, and Administrators of the Year. And this is for possible action by Superintendent Heeling and Vice President Mike Walker. Go ahead.
So I guess this is really just filling out the board's preference. Like I said, in the initial request, before COVID, when Stacy was the president and I was the vice president, we were looking at ways to update the recognition process because it's so awkward that it's in a, yeah, and it's in a school board meeting and we're, as trustees, like, well, do we report on what our school says or do we just skip it? Half of us just skip it? And, you know, there's all these people that are just sitting there like, we don't care about this. We want to see if, you know, our person gets recognized. So I think that it would be really nice to turn it into a reception. And my mind is to start with the employee recognition event, and then if that goes well, possibly even tie in the recognition of our retirees. Because at the end of the year, we usually have two different meetings that are kind of impacted with those service awards and also recognition events. And I think it would just be a nice celebration where families come. You know, trustees still could be there. We could have nice seats in the front so everybody knows that, you know, the superintendent and the school trustees are like applauding, but it doesn't have to necessarily be, we're all sitting there in a table in front of everybody.
Yeah. I would just say, over the years, it's a great event, and I think, unique in the level of recognition that this board has given to our staff members over the years, the fact that board meeting basically has been set aside specifically entirely for that reason. However, it, it's kind of an awkward thing because it's still a board meeting, like the, the, the process, we still have to go through the public comment, all those sorts of things. And so I think there's real benefits to making it a little less of a meeting and a little more of a recognition event. So I think, I would agree. I think it would be, you know, we could still, like cancel that meeting and just not have a meeting on that day, but just make it an event. Or, or an event somewhere around that time. It doesn't necessarily have to be on a Tuesday. I mean, that's another possibility, too.
This year, if we needed to, because we already have it on as an agenda, if we needed to have a quick meeting with just the real essential items that were a little earlier or whatever, we could do that also.
Yeah, there, there's always the, the possibility to have a meeting. We can always call a special meeting if, if we wanted to, but if the board decided to officially cancel that meeting and then just have that event, I think that's, we can certainly manage. I mean, there, there's a few other times during the year where we don't have the second meeting of the month, or I should say, just we don't have two meetings in a month. So I know that we can manage it on our side in terms of taking care of all the, the business that we have.
How does everyone feel?
I just have a comment. No, I'm all for it. I'm ready to make a motion right now. But the reason being that is because, I believe it was maybe about, it was long, a couple of years before I was even on this board, public comment took over the meeting. And I didn't, I didn't even stay for my friend who was being recognized because public comment took it over and it lasted hours. And it just, it was a really sad, sad evening for that. And so, no, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for it. I think it is something. And I would encourage us to, encourage staff actually to start looking for a venue right away. And then possibly, you know, because we may not find a venue and we may have to look at changing from a Tuesday to a Monday or a Wednesday to do so as well. So I would encourage that we move quickly on this as well. And I do like your idea of doing the retirees on the same time as well because that was actually, no, no, it was a recognition. Because that gets lost, too, with the meeting as well. And it's, this room is too small, so.
So when you were saying, looking for a venue, in my mind, and at least for this year, I'm thinking we could stick with what, like using Carson High School, and maybe if we're going to switch it up, that gives us time to really work with AJ and his team to start looking at things?
Well, I think, I think we might. She's, I think we might be able to find something. Because I would, I would like it more to.
A celebration.
A celebration. Because we did the Carson, or Carson High School, and it wasn't bad, but it still wasn't, you know, you had people sitting in the bleachers and it still wasn't, you know, like you said, kind of a celebration and reception type of, reception is what I'm kind of looking at, is that type of event.
Although, Molly, I would, I would say that we could actually arrange it. The gym is big enough, we could actually bring in tables. I know that they have had some events like that in the past. So we, we could actually use the place and, or the space and, and bring in tables and make it, make it a little more festive.
Well, you got to have a big enough place because when you hold the gym, there's a lot of people that show up. And then if you combine the retirees, you're going to even have more people. So whatever you do, you're going to have to have a little big area.
If I could, two things, I guess. So we, we do know that, that evening, just looking at some other places to potentially have it, the Governor's Mansion is not open on that evening. However, the Bob Bolderick Theater here is, so that would have enough space if you wanted to have more people there, but bring people up on stage sort of thing for the recognition. So that, that would be a possibility. The other thing, to the point of potentially combining the, the retiring recognition with the teacher recognition, or the Employee of the Year recognition, because, because of the timing of when we find out when people are retiring, some of them are taking advantage of, of the little incentive that we put forward, but we know that, that there are some that we're going to find out later. And so I think historically, that's why that's been in later into May, just because of the timing of the year. So it, it'd be something to consider if we did want to combine those, to maybe move the employee recognition further back into the year if you did want to do those together. Or if we want to just keep them separate at this time for this year, see how that goes, and then we can always continue to kind of plan forward. Oh, yeah, sorry.
You guys are fine. And as far as the calendar is concerned and, and meetings that, that have been posted. And as far as the calendar is concerned and, and meetings that, that have been posted, it's not an official meeting until an agenda is posted. And the president has wide discretion. So if she wants to hold this reception in lieu of a meeting, she can do that. I think you'd still want to notice the public that's happening.
No offense.
But you can, you can do that. And they'll have, if you take this action tonight, they'll have that notice as well. And so I think you, you guys sound pretty unified, but you, you have wide discretion.
Okay. So with the motion, it says that as discussed, the process of recognizing the 2025 Carson City School District Employee of the Year and so on. So as discussed, we're just discussing for staff to look for an alternate venue. Is that what the motion would read then? Or are we actually looking at trying to pick a venue? And we're just saying, not here?
Well, we can't pick a venue tonight. But the motion, the motion would be, if you specifically want a different venue included, it would be motion to direct staff to pursue the, the alternate recognition ceremony as discussed. And then staff can go, and if there's, you know, a contract that we have to bring back or an update, we can bring it back. But I think right now, what you're doing is directing staff and, and changing the, the, the event from a combined board meeting to a, just a recognition event.
Okay.
Maybe instead of saying that changing the venue, just explore venue options. So then if we don't make a change this year, we have something set up anyway.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just one, is that date also set in stone?
I think we have some flexibility. I think that's what AJ was saying, that if we're gonna combine it, maybe push it back a little bit so that retirees don't have to tell us in April, cause some people don't know.
Not this year?
No, not the tired. I was just wondering, like this, this is just the like Employee of the Year recognition. Is that date set in stone? Could we look at switching that?
It's not.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it, by not making it a, a board meeting, really you have more flexibility with the date or the, the day of the week that you would want to have it. It may be easier this year just because of the tradition of it to keep it on that day of the week. But I think going forward again, there's definitely room for adjustment.
Okay. So this needs to be included on the, on the motion also, no?
The, the date?
The date.
No, like AJ said, if you're not gonna, if you don't want to move it, then it's just a motion to direct staff to explore converting that, that meeting and ceremony into district ceremony.
Okay. Are we clear? Are we good? Yep? Okay, then I will entertain a motion. All right.
And saying, so moved right now would work.
Oh, so moved. Got it, so moved.
Okay, move by trustee Walt and second by trustee Varner. Any board discussion? Seeing none? There you go. Any public comment? Ryan?
Brian Wallace, President OCEA. Just so everyone knows, in deciding what you have staff to explore, OCEA's Light of Education banquet is Thursday, May 8th at the Fandango.
Okay, May 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information, yes. Okay. So back to the motion. All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Walker for bringing that forward. Okay, excellent. So then we go on to agenda item number 12, approval of a consent agenda. And this is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, all right. Move by trustee Roberts, second by trustee Walt. Any board discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number 13, informational items. And this is for discussion only, no action will be taken. And I believe everyone had a chance to review that material. Any questions, comments? None? Okay, then agenda item number 14, request for future agenda topics. Go ahead.
So an agenda topic that I would have, that I would ask. You know, we bring in students for various reasons and recognize them. You know, the speech and debate and whatever else. And yes, this is probably a little bit selfish on my end, but I'm going to take this moment to do so. The one that we don't ever really recognize that you don't see are those student athletes that go on to play at the next level. And when you only have 9% of high schoolers going at any, whether it be Division 1, 2, 3, NAIA, when you only have 9% going to the next level, I think it would be really nice to recognize them at a school board meeting. And so if we could make that happen, that would be great. And I mean, it's selfish because yes, my son just signed and I have a daughter playing at the next level as well. But I look around and I'm thinking, you know, there's so many kids that I think that are and we just don't even know about them. Some make the paper, some don't. Yeah, so I would like to see that some maybe in May, you know, towards the end of May, at the end of the school year. If we could get a list and invite them to come, I think that would be great. Thanks.
I think that's a great idea. Mike, did you have another agenda?
You know, and I don't know that AJ, when it'd be appropriate this semester, but looking at the property that we have acquired next to the high school there, I don't know if we want to kind of keep that dialogue going of possible options and projections. I was at a training this fall and Utah was talking about, they have this CTE Center. You know what I mean? And I think there's a lot of options and since we're not necessarily, at this point, projecting a huge increase in students, but we do have needs in the district. And so kind of maybe looking at options we have and putting that on our radar, whether we act on it this year or just start planning for the future, I think it would be wise to have some things in place.
Perfect. Anybody else? I mentioned it to AJ that I, and trustee Walker, that I think it would be good for us to have a discussion on a possible, a possible retreat for our board. Trustee Varner, you reminded us at our last board meeting that we were told that the training from NASB to share one takeaway from, from the training. And that was definitely my, my takeaway. It was recommended that us board members, you know, consider having a retreat so that we can, you know, get to know our, our team better and, and obviously the superintendent and his team. And so I would like to put that in, as an agenda item for us to have a discussion and have some ideas from everyone to see, you know, what that would look like. Okay. Alrighty, agenda item number 15, a German. Thank you very much.